Okay, we have six o'clock whenever you wish to get started.
All right. I'm here. Where's my video?
I see. I don't see your video, Ken.
Yeah, I know.
Can you see the agenda up and everything?
Yeah, I can see everything. I know that in order for me to be on video, I would have to leave the meeting and come back because I know what happened. Why don't you give me one second? I'll take a moment to come back.
Well, I was gonna say it's a short meeting anyway, so.
Well, that's all right. I might as well.
We'll wait.
All right.
It gives me more time to finish reading the staff comments.
There he is.
There he is.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting. So I'll call tonight's meeting to order. Mark, do you want to take the role tonight?
I will. Randy Bruce. No Randy Bruce. Dean Grosskuff.
Here.
Cynthia Kennedy.
Here.
Kurt Paulson.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
And Ken Sepsma.
Here.
So five presence Randy Bruce absent and you have a guy named Tom Wilson and Mark Opitz present as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you scroll me back up again there? I don't have mine open there, Mark, just so I see the agenda again. Ah, there we go. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and that would be to consider approval of our November third, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes.
I will move approval.
There we go.
I'll second Grosskoff's motion.
All right. We do have a motion and a second to approve those minutes from November third. Any discussion on those?
It's Paulson the second.
What's that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say name and those minutes are approved. Thank you, Mark. And the next item on our agenda, we have one item for action tonight. It is the consultation. Land division rezone, create two to three single family lots, non-muck former Wagenki property near Briggs Road, kind of highway queue.
The reason it says two to three is I got that from the town, but it's my understanding from the town planning committee, but it's my understanding it's two lots plus one outlot. Is that accurate?
That is what the Adam. Yeah, that's what they're proposing at this point. Yes, they they brought in, they brought in a proposal that had an option of two or three on that rather large back lot that's in yellow there. But they they really rather only do the two and our plan commission said that's what we would rather see as well. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to start this off with a little.
Well, would you do that? I'd appreciate it, Tom.
Okay, well, I think we've all seen this lot come before the joint plant, joint zoning committee before. We several years ago and it was approved as a as a PDD for a four unit condominium with a roadway back from County Trunk Highway Q. And we just saw this a little while ago because we had someone proposed dividing that into four lots and creating four single family homes and both the plan commission, town plan commission, sorry, and this body said that's really not gonna at at a consult, that's really not gonna work in our opinion, you're free to proceed, but it's really not gonna work because it's not consistent with the lot sizes that are along Briggs Road in that in that area. And so they they've gone away and now the 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 two proponents here have come to the town with a two lot land division and in that back area. And if you see from that yellow line, yellow spot back there, you can see and going down here, Mark, you can also see that 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 acreage is is very consistent with what's along there in the tunnel west port and Briggs Road. And our plan commission looked at this and said, this is certainly acceptable. In fact, we would rather, we would rather see this than the four unit condominium because this is completely consistent with Briggs Road. It's more rural in nature, which is what which is what the proponents would like to see. They had some other information about septic and where where the best place for that would be and our plan commission was very open and really thought it made more sense to be on well and septic since that's what the Briggs Road neighbors already have. There is the option for a sewer, but it's very expensive to get it up there for two homes and water is not really available at all. We, so our plan commission said, you know, the issues that we really have is you know, those home locations which are shown here as as approximation, we really don't want to ruin anybody's view shed. We want you to work with the neighborhood to make sure that makes sense. The roadway going back in there, the other concern is you know, we don't want this to be real wide. If you could approximate what Briggs Road looks like, that would be, that would be better. If there's any way we can have as little stormwater as possible coming off that driveway, that would also be great and try to stay away from from edges and taking out trees and and the proponents of the plan commission said, well, we would like to stay right on the path that's there if we if we can. And I I think that's acceptable. There's just, it's a little steep at the intersection with Q, so you'd have to do some things to kind of make sure that, you know, any gravel that's alongside of the road or or you don't have a lot of water pouring out on the queue to cause problems with people traveling on queue. So those are that would have to be worked out. You know, we we talked about making sure that we have that we protect as many trees up there as we can, which the again, I'm gonna call them owners because they've really purchased the property at this point. They're they're beyond just posing this for some, for Dr. Wagenki, they bought the property. And I think you can see here where the homes are and how you might be able to fit that in this area there. So, like I said, the the take away from our plan commission, which Dean is here, there was the three lot one which they did not like. The takeaway from our plan commission, which which Dean and Cindy can attest to or add if they wish is that this was, this is a lot accepted, this is a lot more acceptable than a four lot land division. This makes sense the way this is placed in our in our comprehensive plan is trying to be consistent with the with the current existing neighborhoods. And that therefore they said, if we can work through the issues that were in the the plan commission draft minutes because they won't be approved until next month, then we would, we think you you're okay to proceed and go forward. So tonight, this is a consult, there's no action, but the owners would sure like to hear your concerns. We've already heard Dean and Cindy's and and but they haven't heard from the city to know if there's any real, any real problems here. This would remain in the title west port. That's also consistent with our planning agreement. It'd be those two homes, they'd be on well and septic and my impression is nobody's gonna know they're up there. I did send the information, we did get a an email from the owner that is two homes away here and she saw been working with some details on treason and the and the driveway back, you know, this is, this is, this is great. You know, this is, this fits with our neighborhood. Thank you very much. And yeah, that's Karen Teske Osborne, and she's been involved in that neighborhood, really kind of the head of the neighborhood association for a while, she and Joe Pachet. And then I did send it to the the manager of Bishop's Bay Country Club. And, you know, I think Jeff kind of got back to me and he just said, we'll we'll take a look at it. But I I know that Adam has been in touch with them. He's also a member of the country club, so I don't think they're gonna have any concerns. We just gotta make sure that there's, you know, no impact on the cities. What's what's that called again? That's that subdivision there, something.
Shore Crest.
Shore Crest, the Shore Crest subdivision, sorry. And I I don't think that the Bishop's Bay condominiums or the homes that are in Bishop's Bay will even know this is happening, but Shore Crest subdivision with those homes that back up to this lot, that lot, by the way, is a hundred and thirty feet wide. And so their driveway is gonna be about a hundred feet away. So they they're probably not gonna know what's there, but they will hear trucks going up back and forth there. You know, for the for construction traffic. So that that will be, that will be new. Anyway, this this will require a reason to, I'm suggesting our ER one classification, which is one to three acre more rural land divisions. So that's going to require a public hearing. So those folks will get noticed and can come to a public hearing. And the land division for to create the two lots and the one outlot, I'm sure will just remain similar to the way it is now for for road with stormwater protection purposes. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have on this item.
For that. Thank you for that very complete report there, Mr. Wilson. Mark, do you have anything to add to from staff? Middleton wise?
Given the placement of the residences, the proposed placement at the northern end, and we've always known there'd be this driveway here. I don't see any concerns from a city neighborhoods, you know, the neighborhoods in the city, I don't see any concerns from that standpoint.
Great. Thank you. Um, let's see, Mr. Nan, you're here, Mr. Luck, you're here. What would you like to tell us if anything?
Well, Tom, I thought explained a lot of what we kind of had proposed. You know, one of the key things that we're trying to do is, you know, I grew up in the country, this is kind of the it hits the sweet spot, right? You're you're really close to the city, but you have a lot of the trees and and the rural, which is what we love. You know, that's that's one of the main optics of why we love this lot so much is because there is some privacy. You know, so one of our intents is obviously trying to keep as many of the trees there as possible. We did talk about just some of the costs, right? Originally, we had proposed potentially three lots and it was just because of the cost for the water and the sewer were pretty exorbitant and in talking to the town of Westport, they had preferred to and we said, we prefer to, but we just wanted to make sure that we could do it on a well and septic. And they thought they were in agreement on that and it'd be consistent with what is already at Briggs Road. So that was a positive. On the actual driveway itself, you know, coming from the highway, we would propose to keep it, there's a current path already cut out that's roughly, I'd say about ten feet wide. I don't think it's gonna be quite wide enough with how it is currently. We probably have to go a little bit further to the south on that. But we had tried to use that just because we don't have to knock as many trees out then would be kind of our intent coming up from highway queue. Talking about some of just the easement, I know we've, we've got Veer Becker working with us on this already. They gave us a bunch of different questions that I think I'd like to get some information on and we can touch base on that here in a little bit. As we go up to the individual lots or what were proposed to be an individual lots on the eastern lots there, we had put proposed driveways to get up to the houses. And we put it based on, once again, where on the left lot there that you're looking, there's already a path that comes up on the left side of that lot. And so the intent was, once again, to try to utilize not cutting down as many of the trees with the current path. You can't see it from that view that you're looking at there currently. We actually kind of put like a black marker of where we thought it could be. Now, we are open to that, but the intent of that was to try to utilize as much of the keep the trees where they're at and not have to do that. The one concern we know would be on the neighbor to the direct west of there to the left. There could be some potential light that would shine into his house, so there'd have to be some type of plantings that would have to happen along the lot line, just so there wouldn't be that light shed into his house. So on the right hand lot, there's a bunch of large trees on the right side of the lot, kind of over there by the Bishop's Bay shed. And the intent on that one was to keep it not as far to the right because we'd like to keep some of those trees. And so that was the intent on the driveway from the house placement itself. So those two areas where we have the boxes, they're actually part of the highest points. I think in the town of Westport, we've got a map and it's, I don't know if it's the highest, but it's definitely one of the highest. So the view up there is absolutely amazing. On the backside of the lot, you kind of see there's a twenty-five foot rear easement. That goes down pretty steeply there. And that'd be something that, you know, kind of where the house placement is, is really where the peak is anyways of the of the land. And so, you know, our intent is to be kind of towards the peak and and or get maybe potentially some of that exposure without having any type of effect of any runoff of sorts on to other people's property. So I know I work with Veer Becker already. I know the town had suggested having some type of water plan, what would that look like? So I know they are working on that currently. The road with coming up from Briggs Road is twelve feet. And so when we thought the road coming up from highway queue, we thought, keep it consistent. I don't know what the town and cities requirements are gonna be on the width of the road. That'd be kind of a question that we definitely would would just want to kind of understand. I think right now we'd be of the opinion to have something that you can have two vehicles wide enough. It's not like you're gonna be driving super quick down that road and make it roughly maybe fourteen feet wide is what we thought, but that was kind of just a discussion purpose that we'd like to talk more about. On the last thing really that I I think we have to talk about was.
Adam, on the on the roadway with this, Tom, just sorry to interrupt, but you know, that's something that we can talk about at a staff level too, because it's gonna depend on stormwater drainage and location and you know, one of the suggestions that was made, I think by Dean actually, or might have been John Kousha at our plan commission level was, you know, you'd always do small turnouts too, if you wanted to keep it narrow. But it's a driveway, it's not gonna be a town road. So one of the big considerations that you should talk to is the Middleton Fire Department and that for everybody that's here, you know, would you want them to say, yeah, this is gonna work for us? And and Ken is actually the the chair of the fire district commission. So he'll, he'll have that interest for certain and Aaron Harris is the person to talk to there and he's very good and he'll be very helpful. So sorry, Adam, but.
You're good. That's good information. So. Yeah, we just.
You're doing there, you're gonna want to make sure that that you have fire and EMS easily accessible. Well, maybe that easily accessible, but well accessible, let's put it that way.
And EMS is actually one key area EMS. So what what we would do is if this goes forward, you apply, we send those, we send your application materials to them, their comments. So I always try to tell applicants either at the consult or when we talk, you're better off working with them before all of a sudden they get it cold. Just you show them what you're gonna do and then they'll give you their comments and you can work with them that way. So.
It must be a map you're looking at there.
So I. Yes, I displayed the contours, the elevations, it's about one thousand fifteen. The low point seems to be, you know, below nine ninety. So there's about twenty-five feet of grade, a little more on the property.
I think Veer Becker had said it's roughly thirty feet is what they thought it was from the where the road would come up at the bottom of that lot up to where the house would be. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with that.
The other thing that we would propose to is having some type of security gate. Just because there are a lot of people that use this current path already and we talked to the town about this as well, just so you don't got a bunch of drivers just going back and Sunday drive in and trying to see what's going on. So obviously, we'd have to make sure from a roadway perspective and a county perspective that the the gate wouldn't be in there right away, but it'd just be something from a just, you know, keeping some of the the traffic down, let's put it that way, because there are a lot of people that come currently on the golf course. I live up on the new subdivision of Bishop's Bay and we get a lot of people that drive on these paths and get lost. And I think last summer alone, we had three people that got lost going back into Signature Drive, driving up by the turn shed and then thinking that the cart path was a roadway. And next thing you know, they're over by my house by the gate. So we definitely not want that. So we we were hoping we can get some type of security gate there. Obviously, we'd make it so it's accessible, fire department could have a knock box or code or something like that. That'd be something we would like to have as well.
And and again, when we talked about that, the plan commission, plan commissioners had no problem. We just always put as a condition that you know, it's reviewed and approved by the administrator and the engineer and we want to know what it'd look like. That's something you might want to think about when you bring your proposal in for the public hearing and and to get finally approved because I think that's you know, if we have something at the joint zoning committee and at town plan commission that's pretty much final and they can see it's okay, that that probably go better. The story I told at the the plan commission meeting, why, you know, a gate is probably, there's nothing wrong with it, it's private road. We've got nothing that prevents putting a gate there. It's probably a good idea, frankly, for the just two homes. But Joe Pachet, who lives in the lot next to these, told me that you know, he has people every once in a while that get on their bikes and they're going up the cart path. And the cart path goes all the way up to the to a T right there to that T. And then they're like, well, they just wander on his yard looking for where they should go from there. So we don't want people coming up this nice paved road thinking it's a paved driveway, thinking it's a a nice path for them to get back into the site. So a gate's a good idea. Anyway, just I I mentioned that, Ken.
All right. Who's 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 got the left lot and who's got the right lot?
So Cory Cory's gonna have the left lot and I will have the right lot.
Okay, don't don't build in front of each other's views.
We won't, trust me.
All right.
The end of a beautiful friendship.
Yeah, exactly. Spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Um, so I'm just gonna ask Dean and Cindy if there's anything else from plan committee, from the Westport Plan Commission that was, Tom hasn't discussed or or the proponents haven't discussed that, you know, that you'd want to comment on or tell us right now.
I think you covered everything.
I was thinking that as well, Cindy. I think that that's an accurate reflection of everything that went on at the Westport Plan Commission. And I'd like to stress again that I want to make sure that the view sheds are maintained for for the lot to the west as well as each other's lots. Number one and number two, that we are careful about not cutting any more trees on that very long driveway that is absolutely necessary to get emergency vehicles back there and to be able to be past each other. And I had indicated at the plan commission that it doesn't have to be a full width two car deal, but there could be bump outs so that if somebody's coming along and someone's coming the other way, they can pull over. After all, there's only cars from two homes that are have the potential of meeting each other, especially at the gate. So I think if we do all that and and are careful with the details that that this is gonna be a nice addition to the neighborhood and it'll work just fine.
Thanks. How about from from the city, any?
So. Yep, so just to reiterate from the city's perspective, this is in the joint planning area. It's always been designed to stay in the town. It's gonna be zoned rural on water and septic. So not that we don't care and don't love you guys, but like, there's really nothing from the city's perspective. I guess the only question is, why can't the road or the driveway connect off of Riggs Road? Is there? But that's something for you guys to decide because.
Yeah, there's an owner there they'd have to talk to about, you know, it's that the access is the parcel that they've indicated that they have to get back there. And yeah, wouldn't it be great to come up Briggs Road, but then they're gonna have to talk with the landlord about coming across his land and I don't think that's happening.
Yeah, now he's got, now he's got all this his septic field is right there as well.
That's true. Yep, and that's new. Okay, that's new.
I mean, unless you want to connect through on Signature Drive, which I don't think is a good idea.
Well, they wouldn't have to install their own gate then.
That's true. We went down that path a few times now and that was a pretty firm no from the condo association. So.
Yeah. Other than that, I think it's it's fine. We've seen this property multiple times now, so. And who owns those those square parcels that you'd have to build the road through?
We would actually own those. That's part of it.
Those two have bought all those parcels.
No further questions from from me.
Tom, anything?
I have nothing.
All right, well, I guess I haven't commented and I certainly have listened to everything and thanks Adam for a really complete presentation and for coming here tonight. I think that that this looks like well planned out. This is better than what it could be and certainly better than what was brought to us prior. Most recently, and there's there's details that obviously have to be worked out here, but I I certainly don't have any objection to your plan in in its conceptual stage and and as you've mapped it out. So that's your, that's your opinion, what you get at your consultation. And so we're, you know, I think you haven't heard any opposition and if I was in your shoes, I would feel comfortable moving forward, but of course I'm not. That's not for me to tell you, but that's the way I would feel.
Mr. Chair, there'll have to be a hearing before this body and then so the common council.
Yes, yes. So you would want to work now with staff, both both staff on in both municipalities to particularly in Westport to to get the keep going.
We, I did have a couple of questions for you real quick and this is maybe more technicality. So the two lots, so the this big lot that you're on the right, the four acres and then actually one of the longer driveway parts, half of it. Veer Becker was doing it and they said it currently the zoning appears to be PDD. And so they wanted to confirm there there is gonna be no special process needed due to the PDD zoning.
There is, you need to do a zoning. You need to change it to ER one. That's why I sent you and your planner from Veer Becker that information. A lot of this stuff we can just deal with, Adam.
Okay.
They don't, they don't need to deal with it tonight.
Okay.
And you've got a really good planner, Rachel Holloway. I thought I I got an email from at Veer Becker, right? Rachel's really good.
Okay.
Rachel, the engineers that you got at Veer Becker have also gone through this process. So they, you know, we know them, they do a good job. It's.
I mean, theoretically, theoretically, you could just amend the G, the general implementation plan and have a different PDD, but if I would much prefer, as Tom said, if there's a zoning classification that exists that can accommodate this, I would much prefer going that way.
Yeah, and that's the ER one. Perfect. Why we created it when we did this twenty years ago or whatever.
What are the brick property road? What are those parcels zoned?
I think that they are zoned R one or like
Okay.
Some other, their their county classifications are those temporary classifications that we had. The the ones down in the beginning, I think, at the very beginning, I think we did rezone those ER one because of a recent land division that we did down there.
So then we would rezone the outlot as well to ER one.
I think when you leave the the outlot could just be that A one, county A one, that egg holding because we don't want any homes on it, so.
But is it currently zoned? Is it currently part of the PDD?
It.
The one lot is the right lot or the eastern lot is, the other lot is not.
It's zoned, it's just A one holding. It's not part of the whole thing.
I think the concern Veer Becker said was with the ER district, if it's less than three acres is the ER one. So they're concerned about making that all one lot. So I think.
It's one to three acres, you're fine. It's one to three acres and these lots are two and a half acres. So what's the problem? These are things that we should talk about, Adam, at a staff level. We don't need to bother these guys with that.
Okay, good info.
The the only other thing I'd say is the drawing you have from Veer Becker, which is page four of our packet shows two really long driveways. Any chance you might consider shared driveway off of the cul-de-sac for at least half of the property? Where's it? The drawing he had for Veer Becker, which has the curvy that one. No, yes, that one. Right? Could they have a shared? Right, could they have a shared driveway through the middle and then split later on, just to think about, just to reduce the. Tree destruction and the bright lights. But I don't know if you allow shared driveways in your ER one district, Tom.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. But you can talk to Tom about that, if that, if that'll work.
Thanks, Kirk.
Yep, thanks, Kirk.
Shared drivies are fun until you get uh neighbors who fight, and then you have to enforce easements and that fun stuff.
Well, they have a lot of shared driveway already.
Well, Br- Briggs Road is all the shared driveway.
All right, um, anything else, anything from um? Uh, Adam or Cory, anything from any other uh commission members or our staff? All right, well, I think you've uh you've heard from us, and your consultation is now concluded. And for us, um, here, that means that we just have one more thing to do tonight, um, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I think Commissioner Kennedy was trying to move and her, she was muted.
I I had Gosekoff and Kennedy already from last time's networks.
That's I'm, I'm having a hard time with my mic tonight.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye, post say nay, we're adjourned, thanks all tonight, and.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys, appreciate the time.